All right. So, the clock behind me says seven, even though the clock in front of me does not, but that's okay. We're gonna start. Welcome to the zoning board. I am asked to remind my board members to speak into the microphone when you speak. Okay. And the first case is 1919 Slackman Incorporated doing business as the Pearl, appeal from a person aggrieved regarding Maxi suit. And we have a letter from the attorney asking for continuation until November. So, I need a motion to continue.
I'll make a motion to allow continuation till November.
Second. All in favor? Okay. We will continue that hearing until November. November...
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth. Okay. Good. Okay. Eleven twenty-four Cumberland Farms Incorporated, asking for an amendment. Can you come on and tell us who you are and what you're doing?
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
Just, I don't think it matters to anybody, but I just want to disclose that I was on the planning board in 2011 when this was referred to the planning board as a development of significant impact.
Okay. Thank you.
Set the board.
All right. Yes, I'm gonna set the board. Is Bruce, Manny, Mick, Will, and myself.
Good evening. My name is Doug Troyer, represent Cumberland Farms. With me tonight is Don Johnson, who's a project manager for Cumberland Farms, also Sean Riley from Coastal Engineering. Briefly, as I believe this board is aware, this board granted a special permit after a lengthy back and forth from, I think we originally filed in 2011, and then ended up with a land court decision in end of 2016. And this board on January 26, 2017, granted a special permit decision for a gas raise and rebuild of a convenience store gas station. One of the conditions in that special permit decision basically requires, it was condition number one, the project shall be constructed in substantial performance with the following plans previously submitted to the board as referenced in the board's 2012 special permit decision. And we are here tonight to seek modification, what we're classifying as a minor modification, to four of those plans. Two of them, the site plan in essence, and then the elevation plans. When this case was originally, when Cumberland originally filed its application in 2011, its prototype was different. Over the years from 2011 to 2018, to where we are today, I believe that prototype has changed probably numerous times, two or three times, to what it is today. And we are now to a point where we are looking to commence construction, but we were wanting to come to this board in an effort to make some modifications to the elevation plans to conform to the new model type that Cumberland Farms has. It's actually a reduction of the height of the store and also the reduction of a little bit of the store size. And I think the best thing to do is just briefly have Sean kind of go through some of the tweaks in which we're looking to do and what we are requesting to modify, in essence, to modify the plans with these minor tweaks. So, I'll have Sean basically go through what those tweaks are.
Good evening, for the record, Sean Riley, Coastal Engineering. There really are only a couple of minor modifications to the site plan. In working with Bay Sales, the neighbor to the northeast, we've come up with an easement to use the common entrance. So, that's shown on the easterly entrance. There's an easement shown. Along the eastern property line between the two properties, there was a retaining wall that was proposed. We're in working with the neighbor, we're removing that retaining wall so that he can maintain access to the rear of his property along the existing dirt path. At the rear of the property, there is an existing garage, and there was a tenant that was leasing that garage. That lease has now lapsed. They have not renewed that lease, so that garage will be removed from the site.
But that's not a modification. That's basically something which was gonna happen.
Right.
I think the key thing is to focus on the elevation plans.
Sure.
And kind of identify what those changes are.
Sure. There are no modifications to the location of the building. I'll let Don walk you through the elevations of the site plan and those modifications, but essentially it's on the westerly end of the building. There's a jog, a 12-inch jog. There's a 12-inch jog along the westerly end of the building that I'll let Don walk you through.
Would you like to use this? Good evening. My name is Don Johnson with the Planning Department at Cumberland Farms. As Sean was mentioning, the jog happens right at the tenant space. So, what we did is, we took a look at the front, and since it's a very long building...
Maybe if you could swing it this way so some of the folks in the audience can see it all. So, we have copies of the plans.
We have copies.
And looked at it.
Okay.
Well, not that far. Thank you. It's perfect. Good.
Okay. So, where the tenant space is, there's a 12-inch jog. Because the building is so long and has such a two-dimensional face, we decided to break up that face and bump in the tenant building about one foot to kind of break up that long mass. We also decided to reduce the overall height of the building. So, the previous building that was a proposed a couple of years ago was 30 feet and 2 inches. This one is now 20 feet, 9 and 3/4 inches. So, we reduced the overall height of the building. Another change we made is to the two front gable entrances. The previous building had two major pitched gable entrances for us and the tenant. Here, we've kind of removed the gable and just did a little porch-type overhang over it. And by doing that, we reduced the overall sizes of the signage also. So, previously, our sign was proposed, was approved at 25.7 square feet. We are now at 17.8 square feet for our signage and the tenant signs. So, that was reduced overall also. The biggest feature that was done is we changed the storefront. Previously, it was a typical aluminum storefront, back-to-back glass glazing all across the front with white metal panels on the lower part of the building. Here, we went to double-hung windows, more of a Cape style, and we clumped them together, and we separated them with an actual siding. So, there wasn't a continuation of the storefront system. And we then changed the front elevation material. Previously, it was approved to be rough cedar sawn shakes. Here, we went to fiber cement, and it'll be painted like a very light, light tan herringbone color. And then we left the cedar shakes, that was similar to what was previously approved, fiber cement cedar shakes on the sides, the rear, and then the other side. So, you still maintain that look around the three sides of the building. That's probably the biggest changes that we've done to the building.
You have some up-and-down lighting also?
So, the only, right, so the lighting we did is just on the sides. It's just a little light up and down. It doesn't give off much lighting at all. It's really even accent lighting.
Yeah.
And then, in the front, it's recessed into the soffit, into the soffit of the building. There can lights. And just as we were previously approved, the two signs, Cumberland and tenant, will be externally illuminated. There'll be no internal illumination.
On the siding, the front siding, will that look like clavos?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And when you say here, no stonework, was there stonework before and now it's...
There was. There was a... Previously, we had a three-foot-high knee wall that was cultured stone. It was a dry stack system. And then when we reduced the height of the building, it didn't, there was enough, there wasn't enough height to make the stonework look good. So, we decided to run the fiber cement all the way down.
Talk to me again about the up-and-down lighting, because we specified downlighting, not uplighting.
The up-and-down, it really just illuminates a little light up here and then a little light down here. It's just really, it's just accent lighting that you see on a typical building, like more of a commercial building where it just accents the wall a little bit. It's really just to give a little accent lighting.
It's not gonna create light that shines into the neighbors anywhere.
No, no, no. It's just a little, it's a very dim light that just really is just to accent the wall, just to give some light on the wall.
Okay.
Thank you. So, in essence, Cumberland Farms is before you tonight in hopes to basically take a look at these modifications at which we're looking to and we're requesting. I have submitted findings of fact and request identifying the specific plans to which Cumberland Farms is looking to modify, in essence agreeing to the new plans, which then would allow Cumberland Farms to proceed with construction, which they are looking to do sometime, hopefully end of October, November, depending on how it goes here. Cumberland Farms can proceed with the plans that were approved, but in looking at the site and hopefully looking to improve it even more with the new concept plans, we wanted to take the opportunity to come here in hopes to make what we believe is making the property even better at this point. So, we request the board to grant the modification.
Okay. And Chris, we had no letters on this one, right? Is there anyone in the audience who wanted to speak to this? Come to the microphone, please, and tell us your name.
Good evening. My name's Mary Ellen O'Sullivan Delaney, and I own a home at 20 Cedar Down Way, which is a direct abutter, so I've been invited to this meeting. I object to the modified plan, point three on page five, as regards to the lighting. You might say it's just accent lighting, up and down, but I would prefer that you consider the neighbors and have the lighting go down and no uplight at all. If it is just a matter of accent lighting, then it's, you can just, you know, change that out. I also understand that this has been a long time coming. Cumberland Farms, this has been eight, 10 years. The prototype change that they have is really their corporate structure. There, they, if you look at the modifications, their wholesale changes, there is no stonework. The lighting is on page five, under the modifications, point three, on the right side, the rear side, and the left side as well. So, I respectfully request you to consider denying this particular modified plan as to the lighting. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this? Tell us who you are.
Helen Miranda Wilson. I'm speaking as a citizen, and I know you might think that this is a little outside of what you're looking at, but I used to be on the ZBA, and one of the things you were supposed to be looking at is detrimental to the neighborhood, question mark. Since Cumberland Farms first started going through the permitting process in this town, there has been exponentially way more science about the effect of trees on the environment and on the air. And in terms of global warming, and we just experienced the hottest summer on record in the world, cutting down those major old-growth basswood, also known as lindenwood trees, to the south of the parking lot and to the south of the restrooms, which, having looked at the plans that are before you tonight, could have been put in the back, I just am bringing that up because things have changed. There's a lot more science on this, and for them to both shade that parking area with those major old-growth trees, there are four of them, but two of them are particularly old and they're all healthy, and also just to have the environment, you know, modified and mitigated, the air quality mitigated there with those major old-growth trees would be a good thing. And thank you for listening to me. I know it may not have been what you thought anybody would bring up tonight, but I have brought it up repeatedly, including at the select board table.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to... All right. Questions from the board?
When you guys came in front of us for the special...
Mick, you have to talk in the microphone.
When you guys came in front of us for the special permit, we had a major discussion about the lighting. I mean, the board at the time was really adamant about downlighting only, and as a condition of the special permit, I would like to see the uplighting eliminated.
That's fine.
Okay. It was just one of the big things that went around and around, and we insisted on that. So, if you guys are okay with that?
Yeah, it was just meant for an accent lighting. We can remove it.
Yeah, just the word "up," just keep it down. I'm fine with that. Thank you.
So, you guys are gonna do downlighting, not up, not up-down?
Yeah, we will, we'll, if it only does down.
Okay. Thank you.
Any?
I have no further questions. Chris?
Just a question. What's your comment on the issue with the trees that Helen brought up?
To be honest, I wasn't the manager at that time when...
No, no, no. Are the trees still there?
Oh, yeah.
We're not looking to change the plan in connection with the trees at all.
Are the trees gonna be cut down or they're gonna stay? That's what I'm trying to find out.
So, can you...
It will be removed.
Yeah, 'cause I'm not sure which means they're talking about...
No, no. The building location is not changing. Again, the building is getting smaller in size.
I don't know...
The trees...
I don't know the trees.
Yes, the trees...
Helen talked about some trees. Are they gonna be cut down or are they gonna stay? I'm just, it's a simple question.
If they were gonna be cut down before, they're gonna be cut down now.
Well, are they gonna be cut down now?
Yes, they are. Yeah, yes, they are.
What, are they where the building's gonna be?
They're in the middle of the building.
Yeah, I just want to be clear. The first plan and the second plan, the trees are gone on both.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Chair. I was just gonna say that I think it's unfortunate that you didn't bring the old plan so that we could compare the changes to the exterior. I dug mine out from 2011, and, you know, I'm not saying it's good or bad either way. I'm just saying it does change the look in the front quite a bit. I don't know if it's appropriate. I do have the 2011 plans, if anybody wants to see what it looked like.
I think we do as well, if you flip them around. So, this is the approved plan.
Yeah.
And then...
So, you know what?
Mm-hmm.
We can do a side-by-side.
Personally, I like the original look, but it's all taste.
You're absolutely right.
I just think the new one is a little more suburban strip mall, and the original was more wellfleet.
Look at that, Mick. You tell me.
So, when I had a high coffee, I was talking with Doug about basically the changes. So, basically, it's...
Yeah, I can tell, I can see it from there.
It's too much of the storefront. And the stone.
I think the main reason of the change is really due to the reduction of height of the store. So, you are looking at a significant reduction in height, and as a result, it pushes everything down. Again, this is more of the prototype in which we're looking to do. We're hopeful to be able to go forward with this modification. We think it does make things, make things better. It does reduce the massing as well as the size of the signage in which we're looking to have on the property as well.
I got a question.
Yeah.
You read the design here, it's changed quite a bit. It's not just minimal, but is it a corporate decision to keep all the stores in line with the corporate look?
This is actually, this is actually not our corporate look. Our corporate look is actually what is like an East Falmouth.
A gazillion miles away from here.
Eastham, actually, I'm sorry, Eastham.
Eastham, yeah, okay.
That is our corporate look. This is, the existing one is more towards our corporate look with the gable entrance, with the arc, with the big, that is more in line with our corporate look, with the storefront that has a continuous line of windows. We made the proposed look to be more, not as commercial-looking, you know. We took, we broke up the windows, we removed the big gable entrance, we reduced the height of the building. Like I said, the signage reduced from 25 square feet down to 17. So, and the overall height of the building went from 30, 30 feet to 27, I believe.
It wouldn't have, never have been 30 feet.
That's what was approved at.
That's what's approved at.
And that's what the land court basically held to be approved. So, we were actually trying to make things more in line.
Sure it wasn't 28 feet?
It's 30 feet. The plans that were approved were...
It's what the plan says, but 28 is our maximum height, right?
Right.
Okay. That's all I have.
Yeah. But we were trying to, to be quite honest, we're trying to bring this more into the right feel for wellfleet, and we wanted to basically make these changes in an effort to try and reduce the height and also to reduce the signage in this area. So, again, we can go with that, but we were hoping to basically try and make some of these revisions in an effort to do something along the lines of which we thought would be more welcome in wellfleet based on history.
Ruthie, you didn't get a chance to comment.
I just may not be well...
Be sure to speak into the microphone.
What kind of landscaping is planned?
The same landscaping that was approved. We haven't changed the landscaping plan at all.
Okay.
It's merely just the elevations. The floor plan is being proposed to change, but that's just due to the fact that there's different offerings now than there were in 2011, so we're looking up to change the floor plan on the interior. The site plan itself has not changed, other than the fact that the building has been reduced by 30 square feet. That is the only change in the site plan.
I actually like the revised plan better in the sense that it's a lot less massive, and it has lots, and I like the reduction in height. So, I don't have a problem with that so much as I have a problem with the trees and the lighting, but you've already agreed about the lighting. Yes.
Well, the trees are history.
Mm-hmm. I know. Yeah.
Unfortunately, yes.
That...
But I think with the reduced height, it probably would fit in better.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so. I'm in agreement.
Mm-hmm. Anybody else? Are you ready to go to findings?
Yep.
Okay. I need a motion?
I'll make a motion to go to findings. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sir?
Okay. Somewhat lengthy because of requirements the courts have laid down.
Right, and you're gonna...
I can promise that they'll be at least as interesting as a democratic debate. Not a very high bar, however.
Jeez.
The applicant, Cumberland Farms, owns property located at 2586 State Highway, map 23, parcel 39, within the commercial district. The applicant seeks to amend special permit 11-24 dated January 26, 2017, to make certain modifications to the exterior elevation plans and floor plan to incorporate some of the newer features the applicant uses today, since it applied for the original special permit approximately eight years ago. Two, the ZBA has reviewed all memorandum plans and drawings provided with the application. Three, in February, in a February 8, 2012 decision, the ZBA denied the applicant's two special permit requests, one to authorize a filling station use and two to add another principal use, the filling station, on its property, principally because the then-wellfleet zoning bylaw 6.30 required a formula business special permit from the wellfleet planning board. Four, the applicant appealed the denial to the land court, which issued a decision dated October 6, 2015, vacating the ZBA's February 8, 2012 decision, invalidating wellfleet's formula business bylaw, and remanding the application to the ZBA for the issuance of the two special permits. The land court's decision was unanimously affirmed by the Massachusetts Appeals Court in a decision dated December 2, 2016. On January 26, 2017, as ordered by the land court, the ZBA granted the applicant's request for a special permit for the filling station and to locate more than one principal use on the lot. I'm up to number seven. The applicant's proposed modifications are minor, are not a substantial deviation from the conditions of the January 26, 2017 special permit, will not result in any change or increase in use, and do not create any building nonconformities. For example, the modified plan proposes a 12-inch jog into the tenant's space, resulting in a reduction of approximately 30 square feet. There are modest exterior elevation changes, all within the 28-foot height limit specified in the wellfleet zoning bylaw. The proposed signage will be smaller, stonework will not be used, there are window changes, and up-down wall lights have been proposed for the building's left side, rear, and right side. All such lighting will be in conformity with the requirements of the wellfleet zoning bylaw and all applicable state statutes and regulations, and the applicant has agreed to install only downlighting. Eight, the board reviewed the special permit granting criteria of wellfleet zoning bylaw 8.4.2 and finds as follows with respect to the proposed amendments. A, the ZBA finds pursuant to 8.4.2.1a that nearby land uses consist primarily of commercial uses, which will be neither supported or damaged by the proposed amendments. The proposed amendments will not generate traffic patterns, noise, and daily activities any more or less harmonious and consistent with neighborhood activities than the 12617 special permit 11-24. B, the ZBA finds pursuant to wellfleet zoning bylaw 8.4.2.1b that this consideration is not relevant as the site will continue to be used commercially and will not displace or preempt other uses. C, the ZBA finds pursuant to wellfleet zoning bylaw 8.4.2.1c that Route 6 is adequate for the proposed amendments. Public utilities provide service and are adequate, drainage is adequate for the location and will not be diminished by the proposed amendments. D, the ZBA finds pursuant to wellfleet zoning bylaw 8.4.2.1d that the proposed amendments will not impact the factors in this section. E, the ZBA finds pursuant to 8.4.2.2a that the proposed amendments will not contribute to or diminish the diversity of services or housing opportunities since the use will remain the same. F, the ZBA finds pursuant to 8.4.2.2b that the proposed amendments will not add to peak period congestion. G, the ZBA finds pursuant to wellfleet zoning bylaw 8.4.2.2c that this consideration is not relevant since the proposed amendments will not impact services or year-round activities. H, the ZBA finds pursuant to wellfleet zoning bylaw 8.4.2.2d that this consideration is not relevant since the proposed amendments will not affect employment opportunities. I, the ZBA finds... I, the ZBA finds pursuant to 8.4.2.2e that the proposed amendments will not impact affordable housing for year-round residents. The ZBA finds pursuant to 8.4.2.3a that scenic views from public ways and developed properties will not be impacted by the proposed amendments. K, the ZBA finds pursuant to 8.4.2.3b that this consideration is not relevant, as parking is not impacted by the proposed amendments. The ZBA finds pursuant to 8.4.2.3c that this consideration is not relevant, as the site does not contain or implicate public access to the shoreline. Almost done. The proposed amendments will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the current special permit, and the applicant has demonstrated that the benefits of the proposed amendments will outweigh any adverse effects on the town and the vicinity after considering the district objectives for the commercial district as provided for in the Wellfleet zoning bylaw.
Did we add that there was one appearance against?
Pardon me?
Did we add that there were two appearances against, and did I lose track of that in your list?
Well, we got the lighting taken care of.
Okay.
So I assume the speaker's no longer against it, since we're doing the lighting. But you want to say there are two objections?
There were two objections, yes, I do.
I'll put that in.
There were two objections, the ones backing in support.
I'll put it in, okay?
All right, good.
And the changes will be part of the motion.
Sure.
Okay? So those are the findings that I have, Madam Chair. Chairperson, sorry.
The, I need a motion to accept the findings.
I'll make a motion to accept the findings. Real second there.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, then.
Okay, now, based upon the findings, move to grant the application to amend special permit 11-24 dated January 26, 2017, regarding only conditions 1c, 1d, 1h, and 1i as follows. A, delete quote, C, layout and materials plan, C 2.1.1 revised January 20, 2012, and replace it with layout and materials plan, C 2.1.1 revised July 16, 2019. Delete grading drainage and utilities plan, C 2.2.1 revised January 20, 2012, and replace it with grading drainage and utilities plan, C 2.2.1 revised July 16, 2019. C, delete schematic exterior elevations A 3.1 and A 3.2 dated September 26, 2011, and replace it with schematic exterior elevations A 3.1 and A 3.2 dated May 31, 2019. Delete floor plan and partition types A 1.1 dated September 27, 2011, and replace it with floor plan and partition types A 1.1 dated May 31, 2019. Finally, accept that specifically stated in paragraphs A, B, C, and D above, the January 26, 2017 special permit 11-26 and the conditions in it are affirmed in all respects, and the proposed up-down lighting will be just downlighting. That's all I have for the motion.
All right, all right. With the conditions, I need a motion to approve the permit?
I'll make a motion to approve the modification of the special permit with the conditions added.
I need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We had to stamp some...
We have to stamp some things.
Yep, here you go.
Actually, do we? Yeah, I guess we have to stamp them.
I think we have to stamp the new plans, yeah.
How many voting members tonight, just curiosity?
Pardon me?
How many voting members tonight?
Five.
Five.
We have five voting members. So it was one, two, three, four, five.
Unanimous, thank you.
Yes, it was unanimous. All right, it's this, is it anything else?
The new plans are mostly attached.
Yes, they were attached.
The rest of it is a book.
Try to keep it as small as possible. I would like to say for the record, thank you Christine Bates, and thanks Justin for helping me through getting this in, because I am new to this board. I did want to recognize that there was, thank you for your help.
They get one, right?
Yeah, they get one, plus the direction.
So this goes to you with your, after your special permit is granted, and the rest are for the file.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
This is your chairperson.
All right. From a minute to... They're up. Funny to have one that goes all the way back to 11, 11:24. Okay, 1923, Nature's Alternative Inc., and the board for this will be Mick, Manny, me, Bruce, and Janet.
Janet and Sharon?
Two, three, four, five.
Can we wait for Mick?
We have to wait a couple of seconds for Mick to come back.
It's Mick, Sharon, me, who else was?
Bruce and Manny. Here he is. Okay, Ben, I think you're on.
Okay, thank you all for hearing us tonight. My name is Ben Zender, and is this microphone okay right where it is? Can you all hear me okay?
I think it's fine, yeah.
Okay, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Nature's Alternative. And with me in the audience behind me are Nick Salvador, who's the clerk of the corporation and also the operational manager for this project. Nancy Sheldon is the head of security for Nature's Alternative, and she's here to answer any questions you might have about security issues. Suzanne DeSilva is our architect, who prepared the plans that you have in front of you, the site, I'm sorry, the elevation and the floor plans. Then Stephanie Sequin from Ryder &amp; Walcox is here, who prepared the site planning and can address any issues regarding traffic, parking, site issues. This is an application under your retail use classifications for a retail marijuana sales operation in the commercial zoning district. You're all probably familiar with the building. It's the old First National Store now. It's, I call it the Dunkin' Donuts building, for lack of a better term, but it's at 2393 State Highway. It consists of a number of sub-rented or leased-out spaces, including the Dunkin' Donuts. There's the Mass Appeal thrift store, there's a hair cutting salon, there's a cleaning service, there's self-storage units, and there's, there was until very recently an antique shop. And if you know the antique shop, right to the left of the Dunkin' Donuts, when you look at the plaza from Route 6, that is the space that is being, or proposed to be converted to a retail marijuana operation. And so we've submitted a site plan showing existing conditions dated July 10 of 2019. We're not proposing any changes to the site itself. And so if you were out there and you saw the parking lot when you were there, you saw the building itself, you saw the size of the building, the location of the building. We're not proposing any changes at all to the building, other than Suzanne has prepared for you elevations showing some changes to the front facade of the building, which I think, you know, again, and I try not to editorialize too much, but I think will probably improve the look of the building from the front. Those changes are primarily designed to sort of tighten down the entrance in and out of this property, but also provide secure window treatment, so that, you know, the window can't be broken, people can't look in. It provides a secure front entrance to the facility. Suzanne has also prepared a floor plan for the project, which you have as part of your application, which not only shows the relative location of the unit itself in the building, and if you've been there, you'll see at all, there's a long corridor that runs parallel to Route 6, that runs right along behind the building. That corridor provides access to this site, both from the left and the right sides, for the purposes of deliveries, and also there's an entry in the front of the building. And then there's a larger schematic that shows the proposed location itself, which is broken up into public spaces along the front of the building, where customers can come in. They can, they were checked by security, they can enter the sales floor, they can queue up to make purchases, they can check out at point-of-sale entries, and they can leave. And then the rear part, they have upside down, would be areas used by the employees, including restrooms, a vault for taking secure deliveries, areas for the employees to come in, for them to use the facilities, to have break rooms, and to manipulate and use the product and keep the rear area secure. So we've provided with the application a detailed security plan that was prepared by Nancy in conformance with CCC regulations. You know, I don't know if you dug into the regulations, or even have to, but 935 Code of Mouse Regulation, Section 500, has very detailed requirements in terms of how you handle the product, how you store the product, how you account for the product, how you transport the product, how you sell the product. And the security plan that we've submitted, I think, is compliant with 935-500. The applicant will need to obtain a license from the CCC in order to open up. And I assume that if you do consider this favorable, you will condition your application on obtaining a complete license from the Cannabis Control Commission to operate. We have obtained and negotiated with the Board of Selectmen a community host agreement, which I provided to the board for review for this location. So the board has that, and I assume that any approval would be subject to a continued agreement with the town for operation and continued compliance with the host agreement, as well as with the zoning bylaw and with the CCC regulations. That's sort of the sum and substance of my presentation. I could go on and on about the benefits of this application, but I think you know the site, and I'm really hopeful that you can favor us with some questions that we can answer and assist you in this review. Thank you.
Okay, I have one letter, but before I have that, is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak to this proposal? Come to the microphone and tell us who you are.
I am Lisa Toomey. I live at 20 Cove Road, which is right next to the IGA. So my concerns are...
I need to get, I'm sorry, I need to get the spelling on your name.
T-O-O-E-B-Y.
T-O-O-E-B-Y.
Yes. The security, where is it going to be delivered? Is it going to be delivered onto the right side, where Mass Appeal is? It's going to be into the front door?
It's either the front door or the opposite side.
Where the hair salon is?
Actually, you're gonna have to direct this...
You have to direct that question to me, and I have to give...
I can't follow a conversation.
Okay, sorry.
Hold your answers until we, until she's had her questions, okay? And then you can come and answer them.
Then my other question is hours of operation, because I am a resident right there, and my children, you know, are there. Bedrooms are right there, facing the IGA. So hours of operation would be a big concern. And you said a little bit of exterior changing. I'm concerned about exterior lighting. I dealt with this with Dunkin' Donuts coming in, where it was facing my home. And they were kind enough to turn the lights and stuff on, most of them, but, you know, we still get a lot of lighting. Let's see, odor. How is the odor going to be controlled? Is there going to be a ventilation system? Because I do hear that that's an issue. People hanging around, smoking outside. How is that going to be controlled in the parking lot? Can it be controlled? Do you tell them they can't smoke there, even though it's the law that they can't? But, because I'm, you know, am I going to get a whiff of the odor coming right into my home, as I'm sitting on my porch? That's a huge concern for me. The hanging around, that's also a concern, but Dunkin' Donuts is there, they have the outside area, so I get that. But, and then traffic, also another big thing for me. But I guess the odor is a huge one for me, because, you know, you're trying to tell your kids, "Don't smoke, you know, don't do this." But when we're smelling it, or if we're smelling it, you know, that's a hard thing to explain to a child, you know? So I think that's my biggest thing, is the venting and security, and what was the other one?
The hours and the delivery.
The hours, yeah, and the delivery. The hours are a real big thing, you know? Dunkin' Donuts stays open till like 8, 9 o'clock, sometimes a little later. Usually dies off at like 6:00. So there's like one or two cars in the parking lot. But are we going to be open till 11:00 at night, on a school night? And people all in there, and hanging around? It's just, that's a big concern for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ben, do you have someone who can answer some of those questions?
I do, Nancy, would you mind coming up?
Yeah.
Okay, in front of the microphone. With regard to hours of operation, I can address that question. We had thought 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. would be appropriate hours, although in thinking about this, and I haven't talked in depth with this with my client, but Dunkin' Donuts opens a little bit earlier than that, which means that if somebody did want to go into the store, let's say at 9:00 in the morning, and Dunkin' Donuts was open, it might actually have some trip reduction benefits to have it be open when people are stopping by in the morning. So I was going to suggest 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., but if the board wants to go with 10:00 to 8:00, we're fine with that as well. With regard to, you know, the other concerns, I think the question's, the answer's being asked, delivery. Oh, delivery. Delivery will either be through the front door before it's open, or it will be in the left-hand side door, which is the door facing the post office. It's a little more secure, it's a little more private. It doesn't have as much activity, because you have Mass Appeal on the other side. So we could certainly have a condition that has no deliveries on the north side of the property. And then lighting, it would be strictly downlit along the front of the building, underneath the canopy, so I don't think it would be any lighting that would be projected towards Cove Road in any way. And then odor and people hanging outside, I'm hoping that Nancy can address that.
Well, based on the Cannabis Commission, it states with our security plan that an officer continuously drove through the parking lot looking for people who were attempting to smoke or any other type of diversion. So that would be continuous, as well as monitoring the cameras, so they would be under surveillance at all times. And that would include going through the Dunkin' Donuts lot as well. So I know there's picnic tables out there and things like that. We'd be telling people that the product has to stay in a sealed bag, that they cannot open it until they're off the property. So we would be making sure that their visit there is within 10, 15 minutes. They pick out their product, and they quickly leave, almost like the liquor store, very similar. No one's going to be hanging out there, and we'll continuously monitor the situation. As it goes for odor, there's no grow, there's no cultivation, and everything is under glass. It's in a vault overnight, so there isn't anything open or left unattended, where it would create an odor.
With regard to traffic, we didn't perform a traffic study because we're not creating a new and different use. We didn't fall under the development of significant impact provisions of the bylaw. So it's a fairly heavily trafficked area, and we expect there will be an increase in traffic over the existing antique store. We anticipate that the traffic patterns won't change in any meaningful way. There may be some increase in intensity, of course, hopefully there will be, it'll be successful. But the, there are multiple entrances onto Route 6. In fact, there are four means of access onto Route 6, either onto Cove Road and out, which I don't recommend to anybody. And then there are two on the property itself, and then there's one through the post office property and out as well, which in the summertime, as you know, has a detail officer, I think at least on the weekends.
All right, anyone else who wants to speak from the audience? Come to the microphone and make sure we can get your name.
Beth Singer, 40 Sandpiper Hill Road.
So I have a few... Beth, can you spell your last name?
S-I-N-G-E-R.
Okay.
So the parking lot that we're talking about is also a bus stop, a school bus stop. At least three school buses stopped there in the... At least three school buses stop there, in the morning and in the afternoon. I'm concerned about that. Children gather in that parking space before and after school. And my other concern is, I know that in western Massachusetts, where shops have already opened, the lines and the traffic is enormous. And I don't get why we think that won't be the case here. And getting in and out of San Piper Hill Road and the parking lot onto Cove Road is already a dangerous and difficult endeavor. So I'm concerned about the traffic increase entering Cove Road and San Piper Hill, and the number of children that congregate in that parking lot.
Okay. Thank you. And is there anyone else from the audience who wants to speak?
And I have one letter. This letter is to register our opposition to the proposed special permit for retail marijuana use operation at 2393 State Highway. Our opposition is based on the following. One, having seen the massive increase in traffic caused by other marijuana outlets in Massachusetts, we are concerned that the same thing could happen at this location. A heavy increase in traffic at this location would have a negative impact on the residential neighborhood along and around Cove Road, and could cause an impact on Route Six traffic, particularly during the peak summer months, when Route Six does not have room for any significant additional volume. Visitors no longer enjoy Wellfleet only during the summer months, but a noticeable increase in traffic begins in April and tapers off in late October. In our opinion, this is important because of the number of runners, walkers, and bikers using Cove Road and adjacent roads. It is hazardous enough now, and the potential addition of additional traffic will only increase the hazard associated with using this neighborhood for recreational opportunities. The walking and running use of Cove Road from Route Six to Indian Neck is heavily used during the time people visit Wellfleet. The same is true for biking use of these roads. Three, we fear that there is a potential for an increase in impaired drivers on our roads. To our knowledge, there is no method to detect impairment due to marijuana, such as a breathalyzer for alcohol impairment, making the job of policing this very difficult. Any impaired vehicle operation on roadways with a significant foot use could be hazardous at best and tragic at worst. And four, from a land use perspective, it does not seem that such a use, although allowed by special permit, is appropriate at this location. The character of the surrounding neighborhood is residential, with two churches in close proximity as well. In our opinion, the proposed use does not add anything to the residential areas, but does potentially bring a delatorious impact to these areas. Thank you for the opportunity to make our opinions known to you and the board, and it's signed Jim and Marcia Arnold.
Questions from the board? I'll start with you, Mick.
Will had his hand up.
Oh, Will had his hand up first, very good.
Do you know what the situation is with the school bus in that? Is the school, does the owner of this property just let the bus go there as a matter of convenience? Because I know I'm on the parking committee. We spoke, the owner of that property has said, about the buses that go to the beaches, and he really didn't care, as long as his tenants didn't care. If they didn't complain, he didn't care if they used it. I'm just wondering, has the landlord just, does not complain, and the bus stops here? Or does the bus company have rights?
I haven't asked, well, I haven't asked the question, knowing Bruce McGregor, though I know him, I know he probably doesn't care. He's very, very laid back. My guess is the school just lays out its routes and drops kids off wherever it's both safe and convenient, and they can manage their stops, and so it seems like a logical place to drop people off, if they're going to go down Cove Road, or go across the street, to the homes across the street. But I'm guessing there's no formal arrangement. That being said, I have to say to a couple of points. One is, I don't think that there's a logical relationship between where you might purchase these products and where they might be used, when you talk about impairment and things like that. And the second is that I, and this is going to sound flippant, and I don't intend it to be flippant, I always say that when you permit a retail marijuana store in your town, it's the only place in your town you can guarantee that your children will not buy marijuana, because it's really, you know, and there's always a lot of discussion about, you know, where children are and where they're not. You know, putting aside the idea of what message a retail marijuana store sends to your community, and to your children, and to your families, I don't think the location of the store itself poses an unreasonable hazard to the children by reason of its location. I think, you know, the comments about traffic are certainly very well taken. I think there was a very well-written letter, and those are good points, but this is a commercial zoning district, and has been since 1957, I believe. Those homes on Cove Road happen to be located right on the borderline, not only of a commercial zoning district, but of the major artery, you know, leading through our town. And so I ask myself the question, if this is not an appropriate location for this type of activity, where in Wellfleet is there an appropriate location for this? And I struggle to name more than one or two other locations I think would be appropriate, both in terms of parking, access to Route Six, you know, in safe locations, so. And thank you again for letting me respond in a long-winded way to that question.
Okay. Rick?
Yep. How far along are you on in the process of getting a license from the commission?
I can ask, Nick, do you mind? I'm sure I don't know the answer to this question. This is Nick Salvador with Nature's Alternative.
The special permit is a condition of the application, so we've been waiting to get the special permit to submit it. We've finished the application, we're just waiting on submitting it.
So once, and then you get the special permit, and then they go through the application?
Correct.
Okay. My other, it's not a concern, but we had this with a previous application. If you have a situation, eventually, maybe five, 10 years from now, these are going to be like liquor stores, but right now, it's going to be a gold rush. What are you going to do if you have 20 or 30 cars that want to pull into the IGA parking lot? Are you going to, willing to hire a police officer to mitigate the traffic, so nobody gets hurt, knocked down, because you have a lot of traffic in and out there? Or would you be willing to go to a appointment-only system? Are you open to alleviating the concerns of not just the people who live there, but the town in general, that we don't have, we have traffic, it's there, whether we, whether we're going in there or not, but to try and alleviate that problem, so we don't have backups on Six? And we don't have a situation where it becomes untenable, where it would block traffic? It's kind of an open-ended question. Worst-case scenario, what are your plans to do if you end up being, you get the permit, you open up, and you're inundated with a gazillion people? How are you going to manage that?
Right from the beginning, I'll let Nancy touch on this too, but we have a plan on working with the police chief. We've already met. We have a plan on having them there from day one, to help us with traffic. We're just going to assume the worst right from the beginning, and assume it's busy, and have them on-site at all times.
Absolutely. Usually what they do in this situation is they appoint a liaison from the police department to work very closely with us. We share all our blueprints, our cameras, our plans, our alarms, everything with law enforcement, as well as the fire department. So we've already, we'll be sitting down and meeting with them to discuss a well-thought-out plan for traffic, for parking. We'll have parking lot attendants, you know, this is where you need to park, so that they're not parking over at the Dunkin' Donuts area, or the other place, other establishments. You know what I mean?
Yep.
We'll also hire a detail officer, if that's what we need to do, or by appointment only. So we're open to all of those options.
That's basically what I was hoping to hear.
Absolutely. We don't want to see the area of Wellfleet become one of those types of places, where people can't pull out of their driveway, pull out of their street. That's not what we want.
I have driven through the town where it's open right now. It's a disaster. It is an absolute, how people can live with that is beyond me.
Which one is this?
North Hampton, where they need to get a, where they have the pot store. It's just, it's an ugly situation for the people who live there. I feel bad for them, but I'm hoping that the people that come down here, because this is inevitable, is that...
Yeah, I can report that, you know, initially, the Lester stores opened first. There was a significant problem there. They were the only two stores in the state. It was well-publicized. Wareham, they were busing people from the water park. In fact, I can report that in Wareham, they've already ceased having to run a shuttle bus from the water park, because they've been able to manage it, you know, in that. They still run it, they still have detail officers managing Main Street parking, but they've stopped using the shuttle because of the fact that it's settled into a routine. You know, I think this is one of those things where, you know, when the permitting sorts itself out in Eastham, for example, and in Provincetown, and maybe one more location in Wellfleet, I think you'll find that if there is a problem, it will become less of a problem. But what we're offering, and by way of condition, would be detail officers as necessary to manage that. If it turns out that that's not sufficient, then the applicant would provide to the board agreements for offsite parking, you know, to manage that.
That's my only concern, but just that it's Route Six. It is what it is.
And my, what I'm thinking, maybe, it may be that, you know, daytime parking, in agreement with Bruce McGregor, to use the post office parking lot for some overflow parking, if that works, maybe. I'm not sure how much is available over there. Certainly, at night, it wouldn't be, but...
All right, well, thank you. I got no more questions.
Okay. Annie?
I have the same type of concern with the traffic there. It's going to be terrible. I've seen the bus, the school bus drop off. People park in that lot to drop their kids off. It's probably safer than anywhere else. The thing is too, you have a lot of parking, but in the summer, there's buses that park there, and they pick up people to let people off. When Watts Theater has, I don't know, whatever show, the place is just about full from overflow. So why, since you would have a say on the parking, I think there should be something done about that.
Well, look, you have to remember that, you know, if people want to come drop their kids off to get the school bus, or if somebody wants to go, you know, drop a car off there on the way to somewhere else, that's not a permitted use of that parking lot. I mean, this is actually a lessee of this property that has a right to use the parking lot. So if anything, it would be, those uses may have to be policed in some way. And my guess is if this parking lot is full, it'll be less likely that people will be dropping cars off there, but, you know, the numbers that we're providing here are well in excess of the bylaw numbers of parking that's required, for this, for example. You know, we're, I mean, we use fairly generous calculations for the parking, and, you know, 77 spaces are required, we have 30 more than that. So I understand the practical aspects of retail marijuana, such that your retail numbers aren't really appropriate, but that's still a significant, a significantly sized parking lot relative to the uses that are in that building, so.
But also getting in and out of there. I think the board has to take a good look at it, and we should have something written in concrete that, you know, that you would do.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think it should be in case, but from now, somebody to police it?
Well, you know, one of the things we could suggest is the board could condition a detail officer for the first month of operation, you know, and then if it's necessary to be continued, you know, you could leave that in the building, expect a determination, or this board, we can come back to this board, and you can review that, and we could continue that if the board requires that. I can't, you know, we're, you know, unfortunately, you don't have a marijuana bylaw that says this is how you treat this application, you know, this is a retail application. So I think this is a site that's providing significant parking, and for Route Six access. It's probably one of the better sites in Wellfleet in terms of sightlines, and it has multiple points of entry, so.
I agree with all of that, except that there's going to be so much traffic there. Where is it going to go? How is it going to be taken care of?
Except you have to remember, look, you know, the average transaction time for one of these stores is 15 minutes, okay? So, you know, the parking lot's going to move, it's going to turn over quickly. The people that are coming to the store, they're not coming in, it's not a restaurant, you know, it's not a shopping center. They're coming in, they're walking in, they're transacting, they're leaving. So even though you may see, hopefully, I hope for my clients, some significant activity in that store, you know, you're turning each one of those spaces over three to four times an hour. So I think what the board might want to do, and, you know, look, you just granted a permit for a retail marijuana operation at another location, I think that has significantly less parking. I think they had, what, 10 spaces? Eight spaces? In a very difficult site to get in and out of. This is, this is a better location in all of those respects, but, you know, we certainly, if you want to have a review date on this, you know, to have us come back and review this, I think that's fine.
Just to answer that, Ben, the previous applicant that came in brought in as part of their application, what they would do in the event that A, B, C, or D happens, and it was part of the application that was presented to the board. And so that's what I would be looking for, is just, I saw the application, it's about security, but I really would like to see a parking plan, what happens if you exceed X amount of people, just to have it in, so I have...
It can make it very simple. It's, we'll provide a detail officer to manage traffic at any time that the police chief thinks that it's appropriate or necessary. I think he's the best person to make that determination, that it's, you know, that it's, we'll provide a detail officer, and if it turns out this parking is not sufficient to keep traffic off of Route Six in a safe manner, we'll provide offsite parking, you know, that either this board or the police chief thinks is appropriate. I mean, we can't line up contracts for parking in advance, so.
I'm not saying that, just, I read the whole application. I would like to have seen a little more addressed, the parking issue, as regards what the business would do in the case of this, this, or this, that it's in the application.
Well, we believe, look, we believed in the purpose of this application, we believe that this lot is sufficient for this use. We believe that, we believe that, you know, 107 parking spaces on this site with these sightlines is sufficient for this use. And that's why we didn't go ahead and produce a plan for other parking. We were trying to address these concerns as the board members bring them up. We think this lot is sufficient, so.
That's fine.
Bruce?
I'd just like to pick your brain to learn a little...
Here comes the awshucks question, okay.
I have some tricky questions.
Yeah.
No, but I'm trying to learn about this, because I figure there'll be more of these marijuana applications. You've got a, you've got a host agreement.
Mm-hmm.
You need a special permit from us. You need a license from Cape Cod Cannabis Commission.
Well, the Cannabis Control Commission.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I know they move slowly, I mean, that's just been written up in the papers. Are there any other licenses or permits that your group needs?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
So the licensing authority here is the Cannabis Control Commission, not the select board?
Yeah.
As in most businesses.
It is. It's analogous to a liquor license.
Right.
Except with the difference being, when you apply for a liquor license, the Board of Select, in this town, the Board of Selectmen is the licensing board, and you have to give their approval, and then it goes to the A, B, C, C, the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission in Boston, and then they approve it, and it comes back for the selectmen to issue you the license. Here, that licensing authority rests with the Cannabis Control Commission, and the local selectmen, or the town, their nexus to the license is either zoning, or it's the host agreement. But they wanted to make it so that the licensing process is more uniform, so the CCC has the exclusive jurisdiction for approving the applicant, and all of those aspects of the license, so.
Okay. Just...
Well, I'm sorry, Bruce, one more thing. I'm not sure whether a local license is required from the health agent for what's happening. My guess is that because everything is prepackaged, and it's not a food product, it's not warmed up, it's not served, I don't believe that a local health license is required for this.
Okay. And, you know, we're talking about the possibility of this item, this establishment at this location, because, I mean, just to say it plain, this is what the voters of Wellfleet said is the appropriate place for this. And I just say that, that I think we need to take that into consideration. Just as I said, there's only two places you can sell recreational marijuana, the central district and the commercial district.
Right.
And the history is interesting, and it's worth reviewing for a second, because there's a context to this. I think it was in 2008 that the possession of small amounts of marijuana was decriminalized. Then it was in 2012 that medical marijuana was legitimized, or decriminalized, or legalized, however people want to put it. It was very interesting, then, in 2014, Wellfleet, the voters of Wellfleet adopted a bylaw that restricted the sale of medical marijuana to a certain marijuana overlay district, I think it was called, mostly in South Wellfleet, and there was a very detailed set of criteria, a pretty tough set of criteria, for getting a medical marijuana license. It struck me as interesting, because that's a product of need, I would say. You know, we have to respect what the voters do. Then in 2016, the voters of Massachusetts voted to legalize the retail sale of marijuana, and Massachusetts voted 53% in favor of that. Wellfleet voted 65% in favor of it. And I always ask the question, I mean, I, you know, where the 65% felt that these retail shops were going to go? But that's neither here nor there. We have to accept...
I don't think they did.
What?
I don't think they did, not at that stage. That was the hypothetical question, whether you thought marijuana was a good idea or not.
And then in 2018... And then in 2018, the voters of Wellfleet were presented with a bylaw change which would have put recreational marijuana in the Marijuana Overlay District with a tough set of criteria, and the voters overwhelmingly rejected that. So, you have recreational marijuana, a recreational marijuana retail shop, essentially like a t-shirt shop that's heavily regulated by the state, and in Wellfleet, medical marijuana, there's a bunch of hoops you have to go through to sell that, and that's where we sit. The traffic problems, which will exist, is basically the summer, and we're not talking twelve months a year, and that's a function of a lot of things. And I'm just saying this for the benefit of people who took the time to come up here. This town promotes summer tourism into a community where the infrastructure is stretched thin during the summer, beyond capacity, some would say, and will continue to promote it. And this is gonna be, this is gonna be one small piece of the problem, and trying to determine whether traffic will be a long-term problem violates the Yogi Berra rule, if you can predict everything except the future, because that'll depend on how much competition there is in Wellfleet, how much competition there is in Eastham, Provincetown, other communities where people can come with it. So, it's a little bit of an imponderable to me. The other interesting thing about this, the government's the partner here. The government gets twenty percent of gross sales, which to me is incredible. And I'm gonna get down to a point that I think is, to me, important, but I know the state gets an excise tax of ten point seven five percent, the state gets a sales tax of six point two five percent, and the town of Wellfleet gets a three percent tax on gross sales. I mean, that's potentially, from all the retail shops that have been authorized, hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Right.
Now, I think this is a political issue, as much as it is a zoning issue, because the host agreement provides certain things to take care of the issues that these folks have raised. I think they're real issues, I think they're sincere about them. I want to just read something, if people will indulge me. The host agreement, this refers to the three percent of gross sales that the town gets. The town shall use the above referenced payments, the three percent, in its sole discretion, but shall make a good faith effort to allocate said payments to offset costs related to road and other infrastructure systems, law enforcement, fire protection, services, inspections, public health, and addiction services, and permitting and consulting services. Later on, there's a whole section on security, I won't bore people by reading it, but obligates the retail marijuana shop to work with the police department, and it says, "In the event the town's police department deems it necessary for the protection of public safety, the company," meaning these folks, "shall hire a police detail at its own expense to address any queuing of vehicles and/or customers at the facility that present a danger to public health and safety, people congregating and smoking in the yard," which will happen. If you don't think people smoke marijuana, just sit on the bench and look what goes on on Town Hall Lawn.
Group W bench.
So, you know, we all live here, we may as well be candid about it.
Yeah.
And I think it's a political issue. I think folks who are at the, who came to us when we permitted the bank marijuana shop and the folks, should get together, go to see the selectmen, and make sure they do what they say they're gonna do in the agreement, which is to take some of this hundreds of thousands of dollars of money and use it to address the concerns you're raising. That's the purpose of the three percent tax, according to the agreement. And it really needs to be done. This is a political issue. I can, I'm not known for my political correctness, I can almost guess they plan on using this money for general municipal funds, and unless the city, unless the citizens get together and go to the selectmen, they are responsive when people come, they've always been. I think you have to do that, and I have to get together with the police chief. He can order these people under the agreement to hire a detail. I mean, this is sort of all taken care of better than any conditions we can come up with, but it's political.
But tonight is a political problem.
You gotta put public pressure on these folks to do it. If Helen were here, she'd be mad at me now.
No, I agree, but tonight, it is a political problem, but tonight it's not. Tonight, tonight is a zoning problem.
Well, it isn't, it isn't, because there's ample parking. It's like a t-shirt, it's, you know, this is what the voters decided. There's plenty of parking, it's not a, it's a use that's been legitimized.
Right.
You know, I think these issues are real, but I think the funding is there to take care of it.
And also, and this is, this may not carry a lot of weight, but, look, it's in the best interest of the applicant that the parking works smoothly, that the people get in and out of there easily, that nobody gets hurt, and that their relationship with the police department with the town is a good productive relationship, because otherwise, you know, if we're back in front of this board a year from now with a longer list of problems, this is not gonna be, you know, like the show said, the next time, this conversation won't be a conversation. So, it's really, it behooves them to be a responsible partner in the town as well. So, I, there may be a time in the future where some steps are necessary to make this work and work better, and as Bruce said, we're obligated to do that, and we will do that, but I, we can't really come in today and say, "Look, we're gonna lease a parking lot out in a C-2 district or something like that," because that raises other zoning questions in other parts of town. So, I wish I could give you more, and if you think you need something else from us, we're glad to do it, so...
That's my question.
I have one other question.
Yeah.
Is there anything, you know, the state statutes bogger my mind, I glaze over, but there is the issue of the school bus. Is there any issue of distance of a facility selling marijuana to a school?
A school, a school.
A school, not a school bus stop.
K-12, a public or private K-12, but the problem is, school bus stops change every year. I mean, they literally change every year, so depending on who has kids where.
Particularly in Wellfleet, because the school population changes every year.
And the buses, unfortunately, the buses, they don't want the kids to walk more than a certain number of feet down the road, so, you know, I, my daughter, she got on the bus and somebody thirty feet down the road got a separate bus stop.
Separate bus.
Every year, they create those bus stops, so, but no, the short answer is, the short answer is, a municipality can adopt a bylaw of less than five hundred feet to a school K-12. The CCC regulations themselves say five hundred feet to a school. In their draft regulations, it said between facility to facility, when they finalize their regulations, it went property line to property line. So, it's property line to property line measurement, five hundred feet to a school, K-12, public or private. And there are some other things, you know, childcare center, things like that, so...
That's all I had, I just...
I have a couple of questions. First thing, I want to tell you that I live in the Indian Neck neighborhood, I'm about a mile from this store, and so I'm very familiar with the area, and I use the roads all the time. First, could you clear up a confusion in, let's see, on your narrative, Ben?
Yep.
On the first page?
Yep.
When you talk about the number of parking spots existing and required, you say that the minimum, there are a hundred and seven spaces existing, a hundred and twenty-three required, and then you refer to this plan, which says a totally different thing. And I know how you got one twenty-three. You base that on the total square footage of sixteen, eight, thirty-three, and then the employee?
Yeah, what happens is...
How, well, just let me finish. How did the surveyor come up with what they used, and how did they come up with ten spaces allotted to this self-storage? See, under, over here, under parking requirements?
Yep. It was a guess.
Okay, but how are we supposed to know what, I mean, you say one twenty-three, and I know how you got that. This says you only need seventy-seven, that's a big difference, so, what do you need?
Here's how you calculate. You calculate by the square footage plus the maximum number of employees that maxed out.
I know how you calculate it.
So, we, so what we did is, we determined from the relative, from the various businesses, how many employees they had at max shift, including what we anticipate here, which is eighteen. The self-storage was a guess, because I talked to the landlord, and he had no idea how many people, but I guessed ten as what I think is a very high number for the frequency of people going into self-storage units in the back of that property, so...
I just, let me just clarify. In your narrative, you say one twenty-three required, because you based it on the total square footage of sixteen thousand eight thirty-three.
Right.
I don't know which is correct. Should it be based on sixteen, eight, thirty-three, or should it be based on the parking, the way it's done on the plan, which is based on eight thousand four hundred and fifty-seven square feet, which is the retail space?
Yes.
Okay, I don't know, I'm asking.
Here's why, because...
Your narrative doesn't say that.
Yeah, that's not clear, and I'm sorry. Your zoning code identifies how you calculate parking based on relative uses. So, what we have in this building essentially is, other than the self-storage and the, and the, and the hair cutting, it's all retail space. So, we calculated the amount of space that was actually used in retail.
Okay, so this is correct, what's on the plan is what you're saying?
It is correct, yeah.
As opposed to your narrative?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's, that's good enough.
Stephanie has it right, I have it wrong.
Okay. Next question. We're gonna go back to traffic issue. I don't know if you're aware of the 2012 traffic report that was done for the town by MassDOT with the assistance of the Cape Cod Commission?
Not.
And we asked them to look at a safety study for Route 6, and they focused on three intersections, one of which was Route 6 and Cove Road. And they came up with, well, unfortunately, I forgot about this report until today, but between 2009 and 2011, there were six accidents at Cove Road, and I'm sure there's been many more, because I hear sirens there all the time. I just don't have that data. They also, the Cape Cod Commission did a study on that intersection in June, so not in July and August, they did it in June, and they said that at Cove Road, the access, the approach to Route 6 from Cove Road operated at a level of service F, which means very high delay for vehicles on the Cove Road approach. So, they came up with a list of problems and also a list of potential improvements, I don't think any of which have been acted upon, maybe a couple. So, we've all established that this store is gonna attract a lot more trips. It's probably not gonna add more traffic onto Route 6 itself, but a lot more trips in and out. And when you say they're gonna go in fifteen minutes, okay, but that's a lot of trips in and out.
They're frequent, you're right.
Right. So, this is already a problem area, and it's just gonna get worse, and there are times where I've waited, I'm not a very aggressive driver, but five minutes to get out of there. My husband takes three, he's a New Yorker, but, so...
Car, yeah.
But you've got people doing a lot of dangerous things there, because they want to, they can't get out. And the park, that parking lot itself is, it's a disaster. There's two different exits and entrances, there's Cove Road, there's the post office. Okay. So, what are you willing to do to help mitigate this? You've mentioned the traffic officer. Another applicant mentioned going to, possibly, if there's a big traffic problem, an appointment-only system for a while? Would you be willing to do that? Would you also be willing to take a look at this traffic study? And many of the improvements that were suggested would have to be done through the state, which I realize you can't impact.
Yeah.
But some of them could be done by talking to the landlord, and would you be willing to do that? One, for example, is close the northern Cove Corner Route 6 driveway.
We can, I can talk to them about that. You know, I know, we explored that at the time that a drive window was being, was being explored at the Dunkin' Donuts, and I don't remember what the response to that was. I personally think that closing that entrance, it solves some problems, but it created some problems, in the sense that people that are coming up Cove Road, many times, I believe, will go through this to get to another entrance out to Route 6, because turning left, even in the absence of this shopping center, turning left from Cove Road onto Route 6 in the summer is a problem, and there, and the problems are completely unrelated to this center. It has to do with the fact that there's a short sightline coming from the north, you're coming down a hill from the north, there's a steady line of traffic coming from the south, and you have to find your gap to get out. That alone, even without the center, that's a problem. It's a really difficult... And at the time that we were looking at this for Dunkin' Donuts, it was that if you close off the, if you close off the entrance from this shopping center into Cove Road, you eliminate the ability of people to come into that shopping center, otherwise, they're coming out to Route 6 and coming around and coming back in if they're trying to get in, and it just, the board felt that that was, at the time, that the discussion was that was gonna be problematic, but I'm certainly willing to explore it with the landlord. I, you know, it is, it's a potential solution.
I'm not even advocating doing that, I'm just saying, there's a number of things here. Are you willing to take a look at this study, this traffic study that...
Yeah, we can look at it.
And see if there's anything...
The other thing I have to say is, you know, the problem is that the locations that are available for retail use are commercial districts and central districts. Central district poses a whole different set of traffic and parking problems than the Route 6, but if you look at the other commercial districts on Route 6 in Wellfleet heading south, it's the South Wellfleet General Store, it's the Wellfleet Drive-In, because what they did in 1957 was they drew lines around existing commercial plazas. And so, I'm willing to bet, if you look at those impacted sites on the traffic report, you're gonna find that LeCount's Hall of Road and the Wellfleet Drive-In are two others of those sites. And so, we're really looking at sites to locate that all have some level of impact. I think those, I'd like to look at those suggestions, if you're talking about things that the MassDOT has to do, it's very, very difficult, those become deal breakers. But we're certainly willing to do mitigated strategies. If there's other strategies, you know, left-turn lanes work better, but I'm just not sure what we can do. We would love to do whatever we can, I guess, if that helps.
Okay, and also, I mentioned that appointment-only, if things get really hectic?
Appointment-only is good, but it's, 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 there's two ways to handle it. One is, you know, I've done other applications where you do it for the first month for a soft opening. You do appointment-only, but I haven't talked to my client about where that works, but, you know, what you do is, you do a soft opening, you do appointment-only for the first thirty or sixty days, usually thirty days, and then you evaluate it, and then what you do is, you gradually decrease the appointment-only mechanism in your off-peak hours, and then you roll into a full retail. I, you know, I haven't talked to Nick about that, but we're certainly willing to do that, you know, do a soft opening, appointment-only for thirty days. At least that lets people know where things are and all that. I think that's a good suggestion for the board.
I have one more question. Okay, back to security. So, one question's already been answered. You're going to bring product in, either the front or by the hair salon.
Yes.
Marijuana facilities have a lot of cash, because you can't, because of the whole banking issue and the federal law, okay. So, you're gonna have pickups of cash. Tell me about the security for that.
Nancy, any, any here with cash?
Actually, I would have to tell...
Yeah.
It's an armored car service called Plymouth, Plymouth Armory or something. They're insured for it, they come with armed guards, pick it up, be also before or after closing.
But they're coming the front, the sides, or you can't disclose that, or what?
Probably won't, no, we probably won't disclose that.
Okay.
Because that's not something you want to make, you don't want to make the times or the days, or...
Right.
We'll be happy to work with the police chief.
Absolutely.
Well, I wouldn't want to disclose it publicly, obviously.
Okay.
And you probably saw that the marijuana deliveries, by state regulation, are on unmarked vehicles. They're unmarked, there's no markings that identify them as having product in them, so...
The other thing is, though, that, okay, the door to that common corridor...
Mm-hmm.
I'm taking up a lot of time, I'm sorry.
Why are we here?
On the Dunkin' Donuts side, I'm not familiar, I don't pay attention to it on the hair salon side, but on the Dunkin' Donuts side, first of all, anybody in Dunkin' Donuts has access to that corridor, because that's where you have to go to use the restrooms.
Yes, exactly.
And that door, the exterior door, is open all the time, so anybody can come in and out. So, are you gonna have video cameras?
We're not cameras, but plus those doors...
All along that corridor?
Secure in the back.
Our two back doors that open up to that corridor, we secure it at all times.
Is that...
There's a security office that will be right by those two doors.
Okay.
Meaning the two doors to the back of the establishment, the dispensary.
But as far as the corridor itself goes...
That can still stay open on either side, but our doors will be secure. So, in order for someone to access the dispensary, they would have to be buzzed in by security. So, we're gonna have security in the back as well as in the front.
Okay.
Yeah, so that corridor is an open corridor, you're right, and the restrooms for Dunkin' Donuts are on the other side of that corridor, so people will be coming through Dunkin' Donuts to the back of the corridor, to their restrooms, but then if they want to get into this facility, they have to go through a door, and there's a security office right inside that door.
Okay.
But they can't enter through the back, that would be employees only.
Right, yeah.
Okay, I think I'm done, thank you. I think I'm done, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Will?
No, I'm not, I'll say.
And Rita? Okay, I've got two little questions for you. First, is there, there is, the, the one thing that's interesting about that parking is that there is no way for any tenant in that building to claim any particular parking space.
It's, it's, it's common parking for everybody.
It's common parking for everybody. And the, the town and the Watt Theater claim a lot of that parking through nobody's arrangement at all, which is the way I believe the school bus does as well.
Possession is nine-tenths of the law.
You know, it's just the way it is, and Mr. McGregor is kind enough to let people do that, although I think the Fourth of July almost put him over the edge, when the Hiccup was telling everybody to go park there and-
I didn't know that.
Take the, oh, yes. The Hiccup said, "Don't park here, no parking here, go park in the IGA lot and get your bus back up here." So, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm sympathetic to the problem of the parking, but I really think you've got a lot of parking, and the real issue is whether the landlord can enforce actually giving you the parking that you've got. The, the other thing, though, that, my other odd question is, you applied for more than one principal use, but you're not planning more than one principal use? This is just because there are different uses?
Your, your bylaw says that whenever you have more than one principal use on a piece of property, you need a special, you need a special permit for it.
You need a special permit for it.
And so, I tried, it was a matter of practice, whenever I'm permitting something in which there's another principal use on the same property, I apply for that relief as well.
Okay, that's what I thought, and that's the way I read it, but I just wanted to make sure there wasn't anything else. Anything else going in there? Yeah. Okay, I have no other question. Are you ready to go to findings?
Yep, I'll make a motion to go to findings.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? All right, these two will be long. Nature's Alternative, the applicant seeks a special permit pursuant to section five-point-four-point-two of the Wellfleet zoning bylaw to operate the, an adult-use marijuana establishment for the purposes of marijuana retail as defined under general law C ninety, ninety-four G and nine thirty-five CMR five hundred point oh-two, within an existing retail space located at twenty-three ninety-three State Highway Wellfleet, Mass, Map, Massachusetts, map twenty-three parcel two-one-one. The applicant further seeks approval under section five-point-four-point-one-three for more than one principal use of the property for the retail marijuana establishment. And the documents that the board has reviewed on this are the application for the special permit submitted by Nature's Alternative, the applicant's draft findings of fact regarding the special permit application, the fee schedule for ZBA applications, site and floor plans of the proposed marijuana retailer, copy of assessor's map twenty-three, copy of assessor property record for fiscal year twenty-nineteen, the host agreement with the town of Wellfleet, the binding letter of intent for the option to lease, and the applicant's security plan. Okay. In connection with the granting of this special permit pursuant to section eight-point-four-point-two of the bylaw, the board found the benefits of the proposed use of the property as an adult-use marijuana establishment for the operation of a retail marijuana establishment will outweigh any adverse effects on the town based on the following findings. The property comprises approximately one hundred and one, one hun, one hundred and one thousand, one hundred and ninety-two square feet of land and three hundred linear feet of frontage on Route Six State Highway in the commercial zoning district where forty thousand square feet of land and twenty, two hundred feet of frontage are required. Can't read. The property is improved with a two-story brick commercial structure with approximately sixteen thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three square feet of floor area containing a Dunkin' Donuts establishment, hair salon, antique store, thrift store, and self-storage units, although the antique store is no longer there. I should probably say former. The structure is conforming as to lot coverage, height, and all building sideline setbacks, save for the south side, which is twenty-five point three feet from the sideline where thirty-five feet is required. The property is non-conforming with regard to parking area setback requirements, the parking areas being zero feet from Cove Road where ten feet are required. Is that really true? It doesn't look like it's zero feet. And fifteen feet from Route Six where thirty-five feet are required. The applicant proposes establishing a marijuana retail store in three thousand, one hundred and thirty square feet of the first floor presently, the location of a retail antique store. The use of the space as a retail store is not changing. The remaining uses of the building are not changing. The site plan shows a hundred and seven parking spaces where seventy-seven are required. The building is well set back from Route Six being two hundred and fifteen point seven feet and from Cove Road being seventy-six feet. The property provides two entrance exits onto Route Six and affords relatively straight and clear sightlines. The property also provides entrances onto Cove Road and the adjacent post office theater property, both of which provide nearby access to Route Six. Retail sales of marijuana is not separately defined and regulated by the Wellfleet zoning bylaw, but is rather a retail trade use permitted in the commercial zoning district by special permit. The proposed use is not a change of use of the building, and therefore, the parking requirement provisions of section six-point-three and landscaping requirements of section six-point-one-two do not apply to this application. The proposal is projected to provide significant additional revenue to the town of Wellfleet. Route Six provides adequate access and other public services to the property. There is no reasonable likelihood of environmental damage from the proposal since the exterior of the building and the parking areas will remain the same. The proposal will beneficial, beneficially increase the diversity of services available locally as it will create a new and dynamic business. There will be a seasonal increase in traffic due to numerous factors during the summer tourist season, but given the volume of traffic and use of Route Six and adjoining roads, the increase is not projected to be significantly detrimental. The proposal will create needed year-round employment as eighteen employees at maximum shift are anticipated. There will be no impact on any scenic views from the proposal. The proposal provides for adequate delivery and service areas. The proposal will not affect public access to or along the shoreline. There were three objections to the application and no support for the application. The proposal will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than current uses and structures at Locust, and the applicant has demonstrated that the benefits of the proposal will outweigh any adverse effects on the town and the vicinity after considering the special permit granting objectives as forth, as set forth in section eight-point-four-point-two of the Wellfleet zoning bylaws. That's what I have. I do have conditions after.
I'll move we accept the findings as written.
I'll second.
All in favor?
And conditions follow that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Now, I have these conditions, these were the same conditions that we applied to the previous applicant.
I understand.
The adult-use marijuana establishment shall be permitted to operate between the hours of, you said ten to eight, or do you want to say nine to eight?
I just thought that nine to eight might give people the chance to-
Get in and get out?
Not take two trips to, in the morning, for example, if they stop to get a cup of coffee. I thought nine to eight would be-
How does anyone feel about that?
Do we know what time the school buses are there?
Before nine.
Before nine, eight o'clock.
They'll be there, yeah, I mean-
Eight o'clock.
Seven-thirty, actually.
Seven-thirty is the latest a school bus would arrive, and they'll be there in the afternoon, though, so.
Oh, no, because when I walk over there, I see the kids.
Probably over there.
Okay. Okay. The special permit is limited to the operation of a facility as an adult-use marijuana retail establishment for the sale of adult recreational marijuana and marijuana products directly to adult consumers. The adult-use marijuana establishment may not operate, and the special permit will not take effect until the applicant has obtained all final license approvals from the Cannabis Control Commission. Prior to commencing operations on the property for the sale of adult recreational marijuana and marijuana products, the applicant shall provide the building commissioner, health agent, fire chief, police chief, and the board with a copy of the applicable final license from the CCC for an adult-use marijuana retail establishment. The applicant shall provide an annual report of its operations to the board and other town officials no later than January thirty-first of each year, including a copy of all current state licenses and demonstrating continued compliance with the conditions of this special permit. Any change in ownership of the property or change in management, staff, and individuals with key access to the marijuana establishment shall also be reported within thirty days of such change. The special permit is not transferable or assignable to another party or entity and shall remain exclusively with the applicant for the operation of the facility as an adult-use marijuana retail establishment for the sale of adult recreational marijuana and marijuana products directly to adult consumers. Events deemed a transfer or assignment of a special permit shall include, without limitation, one, the applicant's takeover or merger by or with another entity, two, the applicant's outright sale of assets and equity, majority stock sale to another organization or entity for which the company does not maintain a controlling equity interest, three, or any other changes to a majority of the founding member ownerships or status of the applicant. A special permit may be transferred or assigned only with approval of the board in the form of an amendment to the special permit. Seven, smoking, burning, and consumption of marijuana or marijuana-infused products on the premises for personal or consumer use is prohibited. Eight, the permit holder shall notify the building commissioner, the health agent, the fire chief, the police chief, and the board in writing within forty-eight hours of the cessation of operation of the adult-use marijuana retail uses or the expiration or termination of the lease hold, license holder's final license from the CCC. Nine, the special permit shall lapse upon expiration or termination of the applicant's license by the Cannabis Control Commission. Ten, there shall be a valid host community agreement in effect at all times during the operation of the adult-use marijuana retail establishment. Eleven, the security plan and emergency procedures shall be approved by the police chief and fire chief prior to commencing operations. Any change to the security plan and emergency procedures shall be reported in writing to the police chief and fire chief within fourteen days of such changes taking effect. Twelve, the applicant shall provide to the building inspector and chief of police department the name, telephone number, and electronic mail address of a contact person in the event that such person needs to be contacted after regular business hours to address an urgent issue. Such contact information shall be kept updated by the permit holder. Now, that's all I had, but I heard the board say that they would like a condition that deliveries would not be on the Cove roadside? All deliveries?
Fine.
No deliveries will be made on the Cove roadside, is that sufficient?
That's fine.
Yep.
And the other was, um, question of, the detail officer for the first months of operation?
That's fine.
Okay.
Or, I, we could say, or as, or as deemed necessary by the police-
By the police chief, yeah.
Because it could extend well beyond the first months of operation.
Yeah, right.
Do you know exactly how you're going to word that?
I was going to say, detail officers to control traffic will be provided for the first few months, months of operation, or as deemed necessary by the chief of police. And, all right, and that, that's what I had for conditions.
So the, the open hours will be from nine to eight?
Eight. Nine to eight. And you can open, I assume you can do less than that if you want to, but that's a maximum?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the, those are the findings?
Those are the, those are the conditions, those are the conditions, so-
We've already approved the findings.
We've approved the findings, now we-
We accept the motion and conditions as written.
A second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Okay, and based on that, I need ma, a motion to grant the special permit.
I'll make a motion to grant the second for this special, second.
Second, all in favor?
Thank you all.
All right.
Dave New World.
May I suggest that Chris send copies of final-
Thank you for your time.
Yes, yeah.
What have you?
Yes.
What was the last?
The last motion made, there was a motion made to accept the conditions, and then, and, yes, and then there was a final motion to grant the special permit based on the findings and the conditions.
All right, so.
Accept the conditions.
Accept.
Yeah, and I think Manny seconded that, and then Manny moved, Nick moved the permit based, and Manny seconded that.
You get a bunch of stuff to approve, you're going to go down.
The permit, and Manny seconded that, all unanimous, and I will get, make sure, you're going to make sure that the police chief, et cetera, gets copies of this.
Good one, I ordered a good one.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Yeah, this is like affordable, really expensive. I started in the face track.
I bought a, I bought a, I bought a, four of my-
We have minutes?
I don't think we do.
Calibration block.
Do we have minutes?
And play dial gauge.
Okay, yes, we have minutes.
So I'll, I'll move that we accept the-
The minutes?
The minutes from August.
From August? Um, I need a second. All in favor? You can't vote, oh, yes, you can vote on them, you can't move or second them, but you can vote on them, even if you're not here.
Okay.
All right.
Something to be stamped?
I don't know what you need.
It's a used permit.
It's a used permit.
Okay, so we're not just playing with floor plans and stuff, aren't we?
They're all inside.
Yeah, I mean, that's from Justin.
I mean, that's, you know.
Justin.
Justin, you don't, do you want, you don't need us to stamp these floor plans, right?
Floor plans.
We don't, you don't need-
Site plan, yeah, we endorsed the site plan, it was approved with the conditions.
Other ones, yeah.
Site plan.